Let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, 22nd. And please stand beside the podium, please.
I would like to welcome the United States of America and the United Republic for which stands one nation under God, in whose law the liberty and justice are.
Role calls.
Jim Banson.
Here.
Jack Rui.
Here.
Lisa Hetzel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Louve.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Okay, we know Casey Rooney absent for the record. Our agenda tonight, we will invite anybody from the public who would like to speak. I've asked that you limit your comments to three minutes, please. Brief President's Report, including the Student School Board Representatives, Superintendent's Report, approved with consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month in committee, brief update from Facilities and Finance, brief update for Program and Personnel. No property, correct?
No property.
Okay, Seado.
Stealing books, Mr.?
No.
Nothing like a grand entrance.
A photograph breaks into the library.
Let's see, no ISB, and we will have an executive session tonight for two matters. First one, collective negotiating matters, five ILCS 120/2C2, and two employment of employee, five ILCS 120/2C1. We will not be taking any board action after that session, okay? So, let's start. Anybody from the public who would like to speak? No? No, okay. All right, next President's Report. I have one item. Many of you know that at yesterday's 2018 Illinois chapter of the National Wrestling Hall of Fame, there was a banquet, and our distinguished, D-128 superintendent, Dr. Prentice Lee, was formally inducted into the chapter's Hall of Fame and awarded the chapter's Outstanding American Award. So, if you think that's a big deal just because of wrestling, let me just highlight a few things. Each year, a single person from Illinois may be selected for this prestigious award, which is given to a former wrestler or wrestling coach who has benefited from the disciplines learned and taught through the sport of wrestling to achieve the highest levels of success in his or her profession. Only 12 former Illinois wrestlers have had this award since 1994, when the Illinois chapter was started. Other award winners have been CEOs, military leaders, medical professionals, and college presidents. The National Wrestling Hall of Fame's Illinois chapter had yet to honor a public school educator, and Dr. Lee became its first inductee from the profession. 2015 Lifetime Service Award inductee and current Libertyville head wrestling coach, Dale Egger, presented the plaque to Dr. Lee. And I also understand it was a very nice jacket?
Yes, it's our version of the Masters green jacket. It's the wrestling version. It's a thick kind of winter coat, you know, it's nice, it's very nice. It's green?
It's green.
Yes, it is green. Very nice. Pictures to follow.
Bring out the green jacket? Okay, so congratulations again. He had no idea I was gonna do that, because if he did-
No, I didn't.
He would've told me I shouldn't do that. So, let the record state that you don't know everything.
As you all already knew, right? You guys already knew that. I would just, you know, very quickly, I just want to say that I'm very honored and very humbled. Wrestling has been a huge part of my life since high school, and it has really informed who I am and what I do and how I go about it. So, it's been a very important part of my life, and I think it's reflected by many things that we do here in the district and that I've done in my previous life before I came. And I want to thank Dale Egger, longtime LHS wrestling coach and teacher, extraordinary, just an amazing individual, who's an Illinois Wrestling Hall of Fame member as a competitor and a coach. And Mick Torres, our Director of Technology, Mick was a longtime wrestling coach and athletic director, and he is also in the Illinois Wrestling Hall of Fame. So Mick and Dale unbeknownst to me nominated me for the award, and well and behold, the committee actually chose me for the award, but it was a very nice ceremony and, you know, very touching. So, thank you, Pat, for recognizing that.
Yeah, well done. I think it's fantastic that amongst all those very distinguished people that have been recognizing the past, that this year was a public school educator, so I'm very glad.
Thank you.
All right, now, Student School Board Representatives. I'll let you guys decide who goes first.
Do you guys like to start?
Sure. So, this month, the Student Diversity Council gave a great presentation to freshman transition. They prepared a four corners activity in order to show that the different types of people have many similar interests. They presented the classes Vernon Hills Statistics of Race and Language to show how diverse Vernon Hills really is. Two weeks ago, Vernon Hills had their annual write-up meeting for the freshman class. Speaker Mike Donahue from Value Up reminded students about the important lesson of walking a mile in other shoes and to never forget to fight for their value. Three seniors shared their stories and struggles they overcame throughout their high school careers. Freshmen were given the opportunity to speak to their class about some of the challenges that they have faced in both open mic time and in smaller discussion groups. During this time, the sophomores and seniors of Vernon Hills served at Feed My Starving Children to help give back. 119 out of the 120 spots were filled very quickly by sophomores and seniors excited to be able to package food for those in dire need. The homecoming dance was a great success. We had just under two, not two, 900 students attend this year, beating last year's record attendance of 850 students. Congratulations to Boys Golf on their eighth consecutive win at the IHSA Regional Golf Championships, and special recognition goes out to Junior Rohan Vasadeva, who shot a 79 at the IHSA Sectionals and qualified for state. Congratulations to Rohan and Boys Golf. Congratulations to our 19 seniors that have been named National Men and Scholars. This month, Girls Swim and Dive has been helping to raise awareness and funds for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. The JDRF is a leading global organization funding type 1 diabetes research and is committed to keeping people healthy and safe until a cure can be found. Girls Swim and Dive hosted a Blue Out Meet to raise money for JDRF. Parents designed shirts to make baked goods and promoted the meet around Vernon Hills. The girls' parents were instrumental in the money raised this year. Vernon Hills Swim and Dive is proud to have raised $1,000 this year to donate to JDRF in the search for the cure. Vernon Hills Band had their annual band festival, where seventh and eighth grade band students came to Vernon Hills to play with the high school band. Both of the bands have been rehearsing their repertoire during classes and were able to finally rehearse together this month. Guest conductor Erica Needlinger perfected the pieces and led a great performance that same night. This Friday and Saturday and the following Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM, Vernon Hills Backlight Theater will be presenting Jerry Herman's musical Hello, Dolly. The entire cast and crew is made up of over 90 students who are ecstatic to perform this weekend. We hope that the members of the board will be able to make it out for a great performance.
The following VHHS musicians were selected to the ILMEA District 7 festivals, where they will perform in November. Congratulations to David Rosales, Robert Black, Cecilia Gao, Kaylee Brand, Mackenzie Furlett, Sari Gluck, Nicole Barris, Aditi Ram, Donnelly Black, Julian Bose, Jackson Kiznik, Kristen Kai, Timmy Zhang, Joshua Liu, Patrick Chian, Jeffrey Zhang, Sam Rumses, Jane Cronin, Sasha Shore, Ian Joe, Sophia Heiser, and Hannah Merrick. We wish them good luck at the district festivals and in competing for spots at the state festivals. We have a lot for sports. On October 3rd, girl golfers Jackie Park and Grace M. both competed at their IHSA Regional Championship Tournament and qualified individually to move on to the IHSA Sectional Championship Tournament. Congratulations to both the girls and the rest of the golf team on a great season. Congratulations to the girls' cross-country team, who recently won their CSL North Conference Championship. This was the second year in a row that all seven varsity runners earned all conference honors, and it marks the third consecutive CSL North title for the varsity team. The Vernon Hills JV and Frasch soft teams also won the team titles in their races. Special recognition goes out to freshman Emma Wakefield, who set a new freshman record for Vernon Hills Cross Country, running a tie with 1808 in the varsity race. And this past weekend, the girls won their IHSA Regional Championship, which was the fourth win in four years for the team, who will now compete at the IHSA Sectional Championship this Saturday at Woodstock. Also, congratulations to the boys' cross-country team, who placed fifth at their IHSA Regional Championship this past weekend. They will also move on to compete at the sectional championship this weekend at Woodstock. Good luck to both teams. Congratulations also to the boys' soccer team, who won their IHSA Regional Final Game this past Friday. Carlos Aguilar and Steven Oss scored the goals that led the Cougars to an exciting 2-1 victory over Lakes, and they will now compete against Harvard at the IHSA sectional semifinal at Harvard this Wednesday. Brothers Jack and Devon Mulcrone, who are a senior and freshman here at VHHS, have pitched an idea for an energy farm on campus. Having participated in various sports here, they noticed how windy the athletic fields can be, and it gave them an idea, and they now envision placing 15 to 20 vertical wind turbines around the V-HA to help power the site and save money on campus. And in addition, they have created an energy classroom in the school that would be designated for energy education, including data on the turbines and how they're helping the school. Earlier this summer, the brothers pitched the idea to the village board, receiving abundant positive feedback, and we are proud to have such forward-looking students at our school and look forward to following the actions of the Mulcrones as they continue to pursue this vision. In a survey of the senior class, we found that a majority of students are applying either early action or early decision at one or more schools and have been working hard on their applications. Over 85% of the respondents have taken advantage of CRC resources while doing so, the most used resources, including CRC college visits, talking to Mrs. Belido, our college counselor, and CRC drop-in hours in the mornings before school. A majority of students are pretty stressed about college applications, rating their stress levels of four or five out of five, but we are pleased to see so many students taking advantage of the resources available to them to help calm their stress and perfect their applications. Earlier this month, 16 new seniors were inducted into NHS at the Fall Induction Ceremony. NHS is excited to welcome these new members, and we wish them congratulations on this accomplishment. This past Friday, the first group of Cougar Class Act Awards for the year were distributed. There were 10 VHHS students recognized for their exemplification of compassion and encouragement and for representing the daring mission at our school. We are happy to see these students and others setting such great examples for the student body and wish them congratulations. And this year's Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award has been named to Senior Jimmy McDonald. He was chosen for his demonstration of the qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism.
So, for athletics, football had their last game, and they finished off the season on Friday after a loss to Zion Benton. After a long season of hard work and growth, the team is looking forward to coming back stronger next year. For the cross-country meet at Adler this Saturday, both the men's and women's cross-country teams had a strong showing, with both of them advancing to six sectionals. The boys placed first overall and the girls placed third. On the boys' cross-country team, Junior Will Gordon was ecstatic about the team's performance, and we're very proud of his second-place ranking overall. And for the boys' soccer versus Stevenson game on Saturday, the boys' soccer team won their regional final with a 7-0 victory over Stevenson. They'll move on to play friend on Wednesday in the sectional semifinals. The boys were also recognized at the last home football game after completing the first perfect season in LHS soccer history. And so, on clubs and activities, so, the debate team kicked off their season with an incredibly strong start at the Schaumburg-Saxon Invitational this Saturday. In the Lincoln Douglas style of debate, Drew Hopkins won fourth place overall, with Polina Kandova winning first overall and second-place speaker. Public form also produced fantastic results. Jessica Lee won second-place speaker, and Kat won first-place speaker. Together, they placed second overall at the tournament. It was also the first tournament for the Rebuilds newest debaters, and in total, we had 14 new debaters get their feet butt this Saturday, and the team is excited for the year ahead. Their next tournament will be November 3rd. And finally, for math team, they had a North to Bourbon Math League invite, where the Rebuilds won third overall, with several students writing perfect papers, and the math team is excited to be studying the next topic.
Okay, moving on to the academics, the AP Spanish classes had an amazing culture experience last Thursday. They began their day trying Spanish tapas before heading to the Art Institute to explore and learn about Spanish artists, such as El Greco and Pablo Picasso. They had a great time recording videos, opinions, and analysis of the art to share with the rest of the class. In AP Psychology, this year is now a year-long course, and this allows for more time for students to gain hands-on experience in labs to bring the concepts that they learn to light. Miss Bosman's students got the opportunity to dissect sheep brains as a part of learning the relationship between structure and function in psychology. Junior Drew Hopkins participated in the dissection and said, "It was pretty cool to be holding the entire existence of a living being in your hand. Everything they ever were or had the potential to be is a squishy blob in the palm of your hand." Having this experience while still in high school is truly an incredible opportunity, and the students in psychology are grateful to the D-128 Foundation for Learning Through Funding this lab. The Human Anatomy and Physiology classes completed their annual skull pumpkin carving project last week. Students could be seen towing around pumpkins in the halls in preparation for the big day. Students carved the classic jack-o'-lantern and labeled the surface with the various parts of the skull, and the completed products were on display in the courtyard for everyone to see. Moving on to the arts, the Fall Musical, Pittman, will be showing this weekend on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. The whole school is abuzz with excitement about the acrobatics and circus-themed choreography that will be featured in the show. The pit, cast, and crew of the musical have grown as family throughout the past couple of weeks, and we cannot wait to see how all this hard work pays off. The Illinois Music Educators Association, or ILMEA, has officially selected its students to perform at the state festival in January. From LHS, we have a number of musicians who will perform in the choir, band, orchestra, and jazz band. These students are thrilled that they have been selected after this intense audition process, and their teachers are undoubtedly proud of these achievements. The three orchestras put on a fun and spooky performance on October 16th for their annual Fortnite concert. The performers enjoyed the various types of pieces that they played and were all smiles about the show the next day.
So, finally, we have school ongoings. The school kicked off Red Ribbon Week with a fun night of decorating games yesterday. The students painted windows and decorated pumpkins to raise awareness of drug and alcohol prevention. The event was student-led with the help of Prevention and Wellness Staff. A movie night was put on by Life of a Wildcat on October 5th. There was a large turnout and students had a ton of fun. It provided a fun, safe way to spend a Friday night, and cans were collected for the food drive as well. The movie shown was Ferris Bueller's Day Off. The annual snowflake leader training happened this passing Friday at Hawthorne Middle South. The program lets D-128 students co-lead groups of middle schoolers in an inspirational afternoon of activities and speeches. Junior Karina Conchen participated this year and stated that it was a fun experience, and one of the speakers in particular was especially inspiring. She also described her group of seventh graders as funny, and that allowed her an enjoyable time. It was great to see positive student leaders like Karina leaving an impact on future D-128 students. LHS ruled out a new honor this month, the True Wildcat Award. This award is presented upon students who embody the characteristics of being daring. Already, we've had 16 students who were recognized. Finally, there was another session of the Green Dot Bysander Training Program. They spent the day learning how to deal with bullying and harassment situations. The event was led by Dr. Nelson, and the goal is to roll the training out to select students this year before making it school-wide in the future.
All right, great job, guys, thank you. All right, next Superintendent's Report, Dr. Lee.
Hey, thank you, Pat, and great job, as always, keeping everyone up to date and sharing the great news and everything that's going on.
And congratulations, Ken.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, Libertyville High School has been named the recipient of the 2018 U.S. Department of Education National Blue Ribbon of Excellence Award. U.S. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos announced the nation's Blue Ribbon Schools for 2018 on October 1st. The 349 schools recognized will be honored at an awards ceremony on November 7th through 8th in Washington, DC. The Blue Ribbon Award of Excellence is an extremely competitive and rigorous award competition and is the highest distinction granted to schools by the U.S. Department of Education. The coveted National Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirms the hard work of educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. Now in its 36th year, the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program has bestowed recognition on more than 8,800 schools. Recipient schools are honored in one of two performance categories based on all student scores, subgroup student scores, and graduation rates. LHS was recognized in the exemplary, high-performing school category. Schools recognized in this category are among their state's highest-performing schools as measured by state assessments or national in norm tests. LHS was also a 1990 recipient of the U.S. Department of Education National Blue Ribbon of Excellence Award. So, why don't we take a minute and give Tom and the LHS team and family and community a big round of applause? This is the field of the game. And I just want to note for the record that Vernon Hills in 2010 was a U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribbon Award winner. And for those of us that have been in the business for a while, it's much different than, the process is much different for being selected than it was even 15 or 20 years ago. Because now, eventually, if you meet all of the other standards in your application and you appear to be an exemplary school, you are not considered further in the process unless all of your students, including your student subgroups, are meeting very rigorous achievement metrics. So, it really, at its end, it is a performance-driven award to ensure that all of your students are, again, achieving. So, Vernon Hills went through that same criteria in 2010, and there are a lot of really great schools out there that never get the Blue Ribbon recognition because one or more of their subgroups are not performing at the metrics. So, you know, our two schools are just amazing. Tom, congratulations to all of you. Also, a little shout-out to Marina Scott, you know, who was the principal for nine years at Libertyville High School, really did a great job there, and Dr. Kalentis has come in and done what we do in this district, and that is we always build on excellence. So, great job, Tom, and congratulations to you and your team. And Tom and Ray Alvin and a couple of us from district office will be going, traveling out to Washington, DC to receive the award. They're nice enough to let us tag along for the ride, a couple of us from district office. But I will tell you that one of my best memories in my 39-year career was going out with Dr. Swick and Dr. Gilliam and Cheryl Stefan, since school improvement coordinator at Vernon Hills, when they won the award in 2010. It's pretty special stuff, and they really do a nice job with the ceremony, so that's going to be really exciting. So, great job, congratulations. Okay, D-128 hosted a Special Olympics bocce ball tournament on October 14th at VHHS. D-12 athletes who competed did an amazing job. Congratulations to all of our medal and ribbon winners and those who won gold and qualified for the state summer games in Bloomington next June 7th through 9th. Alex Donato, Mackenzie Runkie, Nathan Ferrara, and Vinnie Robertson Singles, and the double teams of Alex Donato and Anna Scholler, Joel Smith and Vinnie Roberts, and Hayley Dunbar and Mackenzie Runkie. And if you think you're a pretty good bocce ball player, anytime you want to play those kids, they will play you, and I can tell you from past experience, they will embarrass you. They're really good, okay? I think the VHS Student Board reps mentioned the VHHS students who were ILMEA District 7 festivals. If I'm not correct, we didn't get there with the LHS report, right? So, I'll read the names. From LHS, Will Anderson, Albert Sterner, Alan Lu, Ben Mayo, Sarah DiNafrio, Natalie Smith, Annika Larson, Kirsten Tlande, Anna-Lisa Waddick, Rachel Hamilton, Noah Kublank, Jason Guern, Alibis Hides, Sebastian Ngino, Elisa Yee, David Lee, Katie Olson, Richie Rush, Ian Smith, Matt Newberger, Samantha Fan, Anna Hyrens, Celia McDermott Henman, Amanda Murbach, Karen Tarman, Richard Zhao, Elias Anderson, Carter Smith, Ava Samadri, Emily Waddick, Elias Anderson, Jason Guern, Rachel Hamilton, Allergy Anna-Lisa Waddick, Matt Harvey, and Thomas Poller. So, congratulations. And for high school musicians being selected to the ILMEA State Festival is the highest individual honor they can receive. So, congratulations to the Vernon Hills students that were read earlier and Libertyville students. Pat, before I continue with some great night of celebration for District 128, I am holding a proclamation that has been signed by Governor Bruce Rauhmer and Secretary of State Jesse White. If the students aren't aware yet, it is National Principals Week this week, and so we have a proclamation from, again, the governor and the secretary of state. We're at, school principals play an important part in the role of education and growth of children in elementary, middle, and secondary schools across the state of Illinois, and school principals are responsible for promoting education and working with parents and teachers to ensure that each child receives services that meet their needs to excel in the classroom. And it is the primary responsibility of the state of Illinois to preserve and improve resources for schools so that all students have the opportunity to receive a quality education and foundation for a successful future. And the Illinois Principals Association, which represents more than 5,000 educational leaders statewide, believes that learning is a lifelong process and that education of our children is the highest priority. And for that reason, the Illinois Principals Association is dedicated to developing, supporting, and advocating for school leaders, and educational leaders face many challenges in educating our young people, and it is through their perseverance and passion that Illinois is able to continue to produce quality, career-ready students. And we must continue to encourage, support, and recognize those who have a positive impact on Illinois students in the educational system in the land of Lincoln. Therefore, I, Bruce Rauhmer, Governor of the State of Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of October 21st through the 27th as Illinois Principals Week, and Friday, October 26th, 2018, as Illinois Principals Day, to recognize principals and the Illinois Principals Association for all they do to help our children learn and succeed. And with that, let's give Tom and John a round of applause.
Does this mean we get Friday off?
It does.
Wow.
It does. I guess I'll need to check and make sure you're here now, right? So, okay, next on Superintendent's Report Agenda tonight is ACT Student Achievement Data and Illinois School Report Card, so we're going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Rita Fisher. Rita?
Thank you. The purpose of the presentation tonight, the purpose of our presentation tonight is to share the assessment data that we generally share this time of year, which is all good news, but also to update you on some changes in the Illinois School Report Card that are necessitated really by Illinois State Board of Education's requirement to comply with the regulations under ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And so, the Illinois plan for complying with ESSA requires some changes into how we report school progress and hold schools accountable that we'll see on the upcoming report card published at the end of October. And really, the focus tonight is to say that while it's important to share with you our assessment data and to comply with the regulations, our focus is really shifting to how do we measure what matters and how do we measure student development of the daring attributes described in our mission. That will come next month, so it's a little preview of data that will be shared next month as well. The first, our AP and ACT data. In regards to advanced placement exams, we've shared longitudinal data over time, and it continues to be true that more and more D-128 students are participating in AP exams, and a greater number of students over time are having success in those exams. So, while increasing participation dramatically, we're at the same time maintaining and often increasing the percentage of those students who are successful on exams. So, very proud of our data indicating efforts in the district and both schools to provide AP courses that are accessible to a wider number of students. We have new this year AP Environmental Science, and you're going to be hearing about that class in greater detail with the presentation on the Libertyville AP Environmental Science Investigation of the Fish Kill in Butler Lake in coming months, too. So, our goal with our AP program is not to encourage every student to take every AP class we offer. In fact, we'd love for students to choose balance and remain resilient and healthy with our daring mission, but to continue to provide access to AP courses to a greater number of students so that at least one student, at least every student experiences the rigor of a college course while in high school. Next, we have our ACT data. This year marks a change in how we're reporting ACT composite scores as well. As you'll recall, the class of 2017 was the last graduating class to have had an in-school ACT administered when they were juniors, so that every member of the class of 2017 participated in the ACT administration. That had been true for- That had been true for many years previously, and that was formally included in the state accountability measure. We've always reported the graduating class data, which is the most recent ACT score earned by members of that graduating class. And so, we're comparing apples to oranges when we look at 2017 to 2018. We saw an increase in the composite score in both schools and district-wide, but we had about a 76% participation rate among D-128 students in the ACT class of 2018. So, it's not the same 100% participation that we've had previously, but the composite score continues to increase.
Does the state report, or percentage of students statewide, actually, the state number really jump? Was that?
You know what? It gives numbers, but not percents on the way that it's reported by state. So, the number, yes, fewer students statewide, and probably fewer students overall, more statewide than, you know, we still had a greater percentage of our students participating in District 128 than statewide because it's no longer required. So, the state saw a jump, and we did as well.
And the SAT is now the required, is now the required test for juniors. So, all juniors in the state take the SAT now.
Right.
Instead of the ACE, based on the change in contract awarding several years ago.
You just wonder if there's a higher correlation in 18 of the people who are taking it are selecting to take it, they want to take it.
That's a general assumption, yes.
The assumption would be that those who take it are preparing for it more, and you may have higher scores.
Correct.
Would be a hypothesis that probably plays into it.
And you can see that in the state.
And they have the means to take it multiple times.
Yeah.
So, the graduating class data is not necessarily the highest score that each student earns on the ACT. It's reported as the most recent ACT administration, which often, we hope, is the highest score, right? But not the case every time.
Oh, so the numbers, when everybody had to take it, or it wasn't like the best they had done, it was just the ones that were?
Right. It never, when the graduating class data as reported by ACT is the most recent ACT test taken by the members of that graduating class, is how they calculate that.
Right.
Yeah. That hasn't changed, but the participation rate has changed. So, because of the Illinois ESSA plan and our requirements to report school accountability in different ways, the Illinois School Report Card that will become public on October 31st will include some new features that we've not seen before on report cards. And probably the most pronounced new feature is that each school will receive a designation from the state, and that designation is based on multiple indicators of student success that are determined in a very complicated calculation of weighting and ranking schools. So, I wanted tonight to just share with you some of those indicators, what the ratings look like, how they're derived, in anticipation of the press you'll see October 31st and afterwards. And then next month, we'll have the actual D-128 results. So, the ESSA plan for Illinois has been based on what ISB calls its mission to really address whole-child issues and to include multiple measures of student success. That's very difficult to see. These visuals are taken entirely from the ISB website and supporting documents on the new accountability. But in short, we'll go through each of the indicators that you see kind of in that circle. But this visual is intended to describe Illinois's mission of measuring not just academic indicators, but also school culture indicators and other measures of student success and preparedness for college and career. So, what are these multiple indicators? These are also difficult to see on the screen, but I have another visual that will make it a little bit easier. So, 75% of the indicators are based on academic performance, and 25% are based on additional measures of school quality and student success. Another complicating factor this first year of the School Report Card is that not all of the indicators are available and included in school rankings. So, we'll talk a little bit about what each of these indicators is, how the indicator is derived, and which ones are included and not included this year. So, the highest, and in addition, high school indicators are different than elementary school indicators. So, it's a very complex ranking and rating system that I won't explain in complete detail. But when you see our final school designations, you'll understand that it's based on this very complicated formula of first measuring the student data connected with the indicator, and then applying to that an index score, adding up all those scores, and then ranking school districts, or schools, not districts, because the ratings are by school, not by district, putting all the schools in Illinois in rank order based on their total score from these indicators. So, the indicators for high school include climate surveys and college and career readiness, the two areas you'll see in gray. Those two areas are hold harmless this year because we don't have, the state hasn't developed the final way to, ways to gather this data and to report it. In the climate survey, we'll all do the Five Essential Survey annually now. That was previously only required every other year for districts. And not all the districts in the state, including us, gave the Five Essential Survey last year. We will give it this year, and it will in the future be included in our report card. So, those two in gray, the college and career readiness also is one of the indicators that they're still defining what that looks like and how schools will collect and share the data. Mainly, it's based on students reporting of their career interests. There are two different designations, one of which is a scholar designation, and one is a career-ready designation, but that's still in development, so you'll get more on that later. For this year, all schools got every point available or 100% on those two hold harmless ELA and math proficiency are the traditional academic indicators, and that is based on SAT administration to all juniors, and is based on the percent of students who meet the readiness benchmark, which the College Board has set it, or, not the College Board, the state of Illinois did its own standard setting and set the indicator of college readiness on the SAT as 540 in English Language Arts and 540 in math as the baseline. So, the percent of students who are meeting and/or exceeding that score on their SAT in evidence-based reading and writing and math weigh into that indicator. New, too, is chronic absenteeism, which is counted as students who are absent for both excused and unexcused absences more than 90% of the school year. That's been quite a controversial inclusion in the rating because of including absences that are excused, including college visits and other things, illness, but that is figured into the rating as well.
I was, I was wondering, so you said that chronic absenteeism, are there absent 90% of the school year?
Uh, who are, no, who are absent more than, so who are present, sorry, I might have said incorrect, but, yeah. Chronic absenteeism is students who are, have absences that amount to more than 90% of the school year. So, 10% of the school year or more in absences, both excused and unexcused. And then finally, there's an indicator to measure English learner progress toward proficiency in the English language. And so, all of these indicators, in the future, there is a fine arts indicator that may be developed, so there'll be up to 10 for high schools. All of those indicators have weights and scores attached to them. And so, ISB gathers, I have a slide that kind of talks about the process. ISB has on its website definitions of all the indicators, but I'm not going to go over what they mean and how that data is gathered. And from that, this method of calculating a score for each school is used to place schools in tiers. I'm going to go, this is ISB slide, I'm going to go to this one that I just put together that's a little bit easier to see. And so, each school in Illinois will be rated as exemplary, commendable, underperforming, or lowest performing. Those are the four tiers. And the calculation automatically requires that the lowest performing, 5% of schools in the district are rated the lowest performing, and the top performing, 10% of schools are rated top performing. No matter what the scores are from year to year, you'll always have a normal curve where you have the 10% at the top and the 5% at the bottom.
Rita, that's across the state, right?
Yes. And that determines those two levels. And so, to be an exemplary school, your score has to put you in the top 10% of schools across the state, and you can have no students, student subgroups that fall in the, in the underperforming category, so that would drop you to underperforming. And underperforming also has a complicated figure for determining it. So, a subgroup whose average score is lower than the all-student group score in that lowest 5% of schools across the state is then considered underperforming, and it would bring a school's rating from exemplary or commendable to underperforming. Does that make sense?
So, you have no group as, I'll call it, poor as?
Yes.
A low 10% when everybody's a group.
Yes. So, they look at all, the all-student average in those lowest 5% of schools, and none of your subgroups, as long as you have three subgroups with, in the indicators with 20 students or more. So, first of all, you have to, it's very complex. First of all, you have to have 20 students in a subgroup, and you have to have at least three subgroups that have 20 students in it to have your subgroups counted against you.
So, examples of those subgroups, there could be?
All the basic demographic groups, as well as low-income, students with IEPs, former English language learners is a new one. And again, some of these are not English language learners, as well as former English language learners. Not all of those subgroups are being included in this year's calculations as well.
I have a question. How, how do you calculate students from our two high schools that are parced out, that they count, that they're included in our two?
Yes.
CEDL doesn't have a sound for that.
The Russian.
Yeah. So, again, as I said, the designation is by school, so nothing is reported at the district level. Each school receives its own designation. Every indication that we have presently leads us to believe that both of our schools will be ranked exemplary, but that designation is not final until ISB releases the final report card data on the 31st and makes it public. So, we're, we're...
We actually have some.
We have some preliminary data that suggests that our, both of our schools should be in the exemplary category, but that's not made public yet, nor is it finalized until October 31st. So, when you see school ratings in the newspapers, our assumption is that you'll see both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School ranked as exemplary.
And we'll be able to let you know that before it's public and let the staff know. But, Rita, part of what's, everything's important that we're just talking about, but one of the things that's very important is this is a classic bell curve, okay? So, there are only going to be 10% of the schools that get exemplary designation, all right? So, if you are 10.1, you're not going to be exemplary, all right? It's a classic bell curve, and then the next two designations will take, you know, and then 10% at the bottom. So, it's not the way that we would do that as educators, and it's not the way that good teachers would do that in the classroom, but it's a system that's been developed. And I think as a result of that, you're, again, going to see some really good schools in the state of Illinois that are going to end up in the commend category.
I think it could be a tier three, because you could be 10.1, you could be 10.1 with one underperforming subgroup, and you go to tier three.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. You could be in the top 10% of schools and have one underperforming subgroup, right?
Well, then you're tier two, right?
Uh, if you have, no, if you're in the top 10%, and you have an underperforming subgroup, you go to underperforming.
You get underperforming. You go right to underperforming.
Yeah.
So, here's the juxtaposition of this, is that if you happen to be in an area that has multiple subgroups in larger numbers, because you're a great school, and even if those kids are making progress within, you know, that system, you could well end up at underperforming or actually maybe even lowest performing, you know, at some point, you know, based on, on the development of this process. But it's the process that we have, it's the process that the legislation and the Governor has supported. And so, you know, we're looking forward to getting our data, and as Rita said, we, you know, we believe both of our high schools will be at the exemplary category. But you can see with a classic bell curve that, you know, there are going to be some other really great schools that are not in that top 10%.
The other thing to consider is that these designations will likely fluctuate a great deal from year to year as they add in the other factors and as, you know, subgroup performance continues to weigh into. So, you know, this, this plan, this accountability plan is necessitated under ESSA, and there was a lot of pressure to continue to look at subgroups and provide resources for subgroups. But again, it, which is all good and which we support very much. But, you know, the way in which it's being handled, you know, necessarily sometimes then puts some negative attention on subgroup performance that certainly you don't want to have happen, so.
So, what they, so what, what's done, we get it. Any of it to remain?
So, yes. So, schools that are at the lowest performing have designated Illinois Empowered Services that provides supports to the school, professional learning to the school, and support in developing a school improvement plan and resources for doing that. Schools at the underperforming level are also eligible to participate in some of the Illinois Empowered Services. And exemplary districts can volunteer to support some of the underperforming schools in ways that haven't been, aren't totally yet developed.
Will it be ever again for the schools that shows how much funding they are not getting that they should be getting from the state?
I'm sure.
That'd be great.
I mean...
That would be great.
I just think of the, you know, schools, especially definitely, the schools that are funded very heavily by the state, and they show up as lacking, and maybe that should be included, you know?
The other thing you'll see on the, well, you'll see directly on the face of the report card is the adequacy level of each district. So, that's an indication of whether they have adequate funding or not to meet the needs of their students.
Funding adequacy.
Yes.
They set a threshold for the districts, and then you can see on the report card. So, if you're District A, and the threshold for the state is here, and your funding is below that, it actually shows up on the cut line like on our, like on our chart, so it's very clear.
Which is also an equally as confusing, complicated formula for determining that.
And just as an aside, if this is eerily familiar to you in terms of what No Child Left Behind used to be, it's, it's a different version of that. However, when, we all worked very hard to, you know, overturn No Child Left Behind because it eventually turned into, you know, a rating of schools, and schools that were making great progress, that maybe had many subgroups, and were making great progress, were still labeled as failing schools, even though they were making, they were bellwethers in, in that area or in inner-city area. And so, it was really a very unfair process. Many of us worked with Senator Kirk and Congressman Gold, who worked across the aisle to actually overturn it, CLB. And the thesis was that they... overturn NCLB, and the thesis was that they would give, they would empower the 50 states to then make their own decisions on this, and it, I think I can say this, it's somewhat unfortunate that most of the states through my contacts, with my professional groups, have really gone back to the state version of No Child Left Behind, in terms of really focusing on, although we have a number of factors here, but really focusing on, not necessarily improvement, but, you know, where a school might be at that point. So, but it is the formula that we have, and we all have to work with that.
Couple of questions. So to fail, we'd have to be in the low, in the 5% or below range?
Or if, we could be labeled underperforming.
For any subgroup to so-called fail, it has to be in that lowest 5% group, is that true? Our score has to be within that 5% of the...
The average score of that subgroup...
For us.
For us, has to be lower than the all-student group in that lowest 5%. So they don't compare it to the same subgroup in that lowest 5%, they compare it to the all-student group.
Okay. And do we get a designation for all of our subgroups? Are we gonna know which of our subgroups are closest to being borderline, for example, or even, even if we just took our own subgroups and ranked them one to the bottom, we would be able to target where we're having the biggest issues regardless of where we're at?
We do get that data. The rankings of schools is not public, where you fall on the list is not public, but we do have our data on our subgroup performance to understand where we have gaps and where we need to fill in.
Do we get a number, or do we just get a, you know, exceeds, meets, doesn't meet?
So, we know what the threshold is. I was at a meeting on Friday with Ray Clemens, who's the, in the Accountability Department at ISB, and we do get a number which tells us what the threshold score was to divide the top 10% from the rest, and the bottom 5% from the rest, so we can, you know, make some determinations in terms of our data and where our subgroups are in comparison to that threshold. We can also see the gaps in how our subgroups perform.
Rita, when we, when we talk about, I think this is important for our community to understand, so when we talk about performance, it's performance on what for high school students? So what is the measure?
Right. As I, as I said earlier, the performance for ELA and math at the high school level is the SAT, and it's the 11th grade participation in the SLT.
So it's one...
It's access for English learners.
It's one data point.
Saturday, one Saturday morning.
Right, it's one data point, right?
One data point as the...
The SAT they use.
As the ELA...
CSAT that we use in this school.
One data point for that indicator, which is the percentage of the ranking. So, it is, to a certain degree, there are multiple measures and indicators to a greater degree than NCLB was, but to determine that particular indicator of ELA proficiency and math proficiency is solely based on that one score.
But those indicators, percentage-wise, are power, are so kind of power-driven in terms of the percentage, that it really has a pretty dramatic impact on where your rating will be, correct? Based on the pie chart that you had up there.
Right, so that, yes, the academic indicators which include, you know, those multiple measures, include the SAT, the EL performance, graduation rate is weighted most heavily, all of those together determine the score that this district gets, and ultimately how it ranks in comparison with others. So, yes, that, that indicator is a powerful one, but there are more indicators now that figure into the score than previously was the case.
The graduation rate is around half of...
Half, it's 50%.
Yeah, it's about 50%, so.
Which seems a little odd to me, actually.
So, Pat, to go to a question you raised earlier, so, we use, John and Tom use data at the building level that certainly includes before ACT data, because we would have our kids do explore, plan, and then ACT, so we had longitudinal data from eighth grade and predictive data, and then we use other data points, of course, how our kids are doing in our own classes and those types of things. So we use a mix of that data. So the essence of, the heart and soul of data-driven school improvement, or data-informed school improvement, is multiple measures. So we have a good handle on, and we have had a good handle, on where our subs groups are and our kids are performing, and the planning and articulation that John and Tom do with their building level teams has really predicated on, again, that concept around we want all, we wanna be able to demonstrate that all kids are more successful. So they're using multiple data sources, including the data that we get from state testing, to make school improvement decision calculations, and planning on, you know, what we need to do to help kids be more successful, and this is just another piece of, it's another piece, it's another data point.
At least conceptually, I am intrigued by this, because we've never, at least at this level, spent any time discussing, I'll call it, our strengths and weaknesses across our population subgroups, and what specific actions we're taking to improve those. I mean, in fact, it's part of our discussion. So I think this is very timely, actually.
Yeah, and in fact, so this, quickly, I listed a summary here of all these steps, and there are multiple resources that, you know, we can look at to explore where these rankings come from, but more significantly, when we, when we meet next month, our data specialists at each school will be here, Andrea Young and Jennifer Loica, and they're going to share with you some of the work that they've been doing, and exactly what we've been talking about. How do we focus on the gaps that we have? How do we identify those gaps, and what actions do we take to make sure that every student achieves on multiple measures, including measures that we hope to begin to tie to our Daring mission and the attributes of our mission? So we know that student success is measured by far more than a standardized assessment. So how do we measure those things? How do we track them, and how do we provide remediation as needed to students who aren't succeeding? That's exactly where we're going, yeah?
I'm intrigued by this.
Yeah. So, so these are, this is really our driving question for the work that we continue to do. How do we measure those daring attributes? How do we track them? And how do we report them and take action on them? And so, next month, we'll see the data presentation where we focus more on what we're presently doing and what we hope to do to continue that work.
Just to kind of loop this all around again, if you look at kind of, you know, 10,000, the proverbial 10,000 feet, so Tom's going to Washington in a couple of weeks, they could not get that award if our subgroups were not performing, were not meeting student metrics, okay? So, we operate always under the concept that it's continual improvement. So no matter how good any groups of our kids are doing, our planning is to ensure that they will be doing better next year than they were the year before. So that's a kind of a continual loop. If our analysis is correct, and both of the schools are exemplary, again, other data point that our student subgroups are performing, you know, better than other student performing, similar groups, other places, but regardless of any of that, we're gonna continue to use data to drive our decision-making, so we can answer the question year over year, are our kids doing, you know, did they do better this year than they did last year across the learning spectrum? And I think part of that focus is the reason you see our continued growth on standardized tests like, you know, ACT, SAT, our growth in AP, because statistically, we have so many kids that are bunched at the top, the only way you can move the needle is if kids across the learning spectrum are doing better, okay? And so that's part of our backstory as we present you 12- and 14-year, you know, kind of data summaries over that period of time. You can only move the needle like we've moved it here, if more kids are being more successful across the entire learning spectrum, not just our kids that might be bunched at 32, 33, 34, 35, 36 on the ACT, but it's bringing kids that might be at 16 or 17 on the ACT to 18, 19, or 20. So that will continue to be our focus, so it'll be very good next month, I think.
If I may, just one more question. So how does a statewide report card system balance with how the district would normally conduct like its goals and its missions?
It's a really good question. So, because we are required to report to the state according to its accountability measures, that's always been an area of focus for us, but on a day-to-day basis, we're considering data about students that participate in our programs, how they achieve in those programs, what kinds of interventions they need to succeed, so we're looking kind of at the finer-grain detail in regards to how our students are performing than just this, you know, one-shot assessment deal that really is the basis for most accountability systems. Much more important to look at the whole student, what they're involved in, the kinds of things that contribute to their success. Their health and wellness is an area of focus for us, as you know, and as we heard in your, your reports to us. So, while the state has moved to multiple measures, we, as a district, have been consistently looking at multiple and more finer-grain details about student performance than is required by the state accountability system. Is that what you're asking?
By the way, if we haven't, you guys are welcome to ask questions anytime, too. That's awesome.
Glad that you did. All right. One of the things, and just kind of in conclusion, it is questions that generate the kind of data that we look at. So that's the focus of our leadership teams, is are we asking the right questions about student achievement, and how do those questions drive the data that we gather to answer them, right? So I'd love to hear your questions from student perspective as we work through this process about your experience in school and what's working and not working, right? And we can gather the data to help answer those questions.
Great job, Rita.
Very good.
Taking very complex, because this is very complex, and really breaking that down to...
And occasionally fast-moving, because things have changed quite a bit in the years.
Like it was last week.
Yeah.
You can't overreact to this data, because, I mean, I can almost imagine a lot of 10.5% schools could have one subgroup and be called underperforming, which the headline will read, you know, big deal.
Exactly.
That's why we wanted to have this report today, because I'm sure you'll be reading much about these changes in the weeks to come.
But all the more reason why it'd be great for us to know the whole picture and all the other data we have, is, again, it sounds like a lot of that data is one day in a year on a single exam.
Right.
That's what they got, they got.
If you're gonna standardize and do a grading system, you have to include something that's consistent across this data. It's a data point. Tom, you wanted to say something?
Well, I just, I appreciate that comment, Pat, because I lived that life when we were under No Child Left Behind from 2001 to 2012. Highland Park High School was consistently in a failing school, and it was because of different subgroups, and they were different each year that we were chasing, but it was, it was extraordinarily difficult because we would have entry data where our students were performing, let's just say for sake of argument, at like third-grade reading to fifth-grade reading when they entered freshman year, and we were bringing them up to 10th-grade reading level by their junior year, so in two years of academic time, we were making multiple years of gains, but because it wasn't a growth model, it was just an attainment model, we were consistently rated a failing school. And it was very important for our board to understand the data, and for our board to help educate our community about what the data meant, because we had kids who should have been celebrated for all of the investment and achievement and growth they were doing, yet they were consistently being sort of initially looked at as a problem because they were the reason that we weren't meeting all of our achievement goals as a district. And it was really critical for our district office to help educate our board, and our board to help educate our community, so that these students were celebrated for the gifts and attributes that they brought to our school, rather than just looked at as a deficit for us.
That's a good point.
That is exactly what I was referencing earlier, and the dangers of focusing too much attention on the underperforming groups and the negative, we have keys to that.
Well, that's a great topic for us to learn a lot more from.
You did an excellent job of putting it in context for us. Thank you.
That darn daring.
It's gonna keep pushing us along, and that's exactly what it was designed to do, right, Rita?
Correct.
Okay, next on that, anything else you want to add, Rita?
No.
Okay. Okay, next on the superintendent's report tonight is amended 2018-18 school calendar, as the board is aware. We had our version of a hanging chat for a professional development day, Teachers Institute Day, and based on a number of factors, we were waiting to see what the state testing dates were, how the, how the days balanced between the semester as a result of that. So, in working with a number of people, including Calendar Committee, we are recommending the placement of our Institute Day on Wednesday, November 28th, 3rd, I'm sorry, 1st, 21st, can't read the calendar, I should put my glasses on, and that is the date before Thanksgiving. So students, the good news for you to share is that you will not have school the day before Thanksgiving. Is that okay? Did we do all right with that?
Yeah.
Teachers will be here for a planned Institute Day that will wrap around our overall theme of Daring, and we already have a plan out with our professional staff here, and that will work fine. We'll do it, as you know, the calendar can be amended anytime during the year, and we have snow days, and emergency days, and floods at Libertyville High School, and power outages, and we always have to come back and amend the calendar, so we knew that was doable. So our recommendation, Pat, to the board, is that we place our Institute Day on Wednesday, November 21st, and then we will amend the calendar as reflected.
Okay, is there a motion to amended calendar as reflected?
So, no.
Second, any other questions? I have one or two questions on this one, just real quick. So what is our attendance history on the 20th, day before Thanksgiving? Is it...
It's not terrible. I...
It's not perfect.
Yeah, I don't have the data in front of me to decide it specifically, but, you know, families that do need to travel to celebrate the holiday, sometimes take their students out on the day before Thanksgiving.
Well, I'm actually thinking more about the people that attend workshop, or the Institute Day.
Oh, that's, oh, no.
Yeah, I'm thinking more the Institute Day.
Yeah, we have no issues with adult staff.
And that'll wrap up by what, I mean, we'll wrap up at 3:30, right? So it does allow us to do a condensed five-hour Institute Day, so it provides a little flexibility for our educators as well to not, you know, have to be at school until 3:25 on that day. So students have a day off, educators have a little flexibility for their day as well. Kind of a win-win for everybody.
Okay.
And a good time of year to do professional learning, as opposed to putting it off till second semester.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, next on the superintendent's report, we can wrap number five and six together because they kind of go together. LHS full project update, and additional 69 space LHS parking plan update. Mark.
Progress is moving along very well at the site. We finalized the installation of the water main for the site around the building. We have multiple contractors on-site, multiple trades. Plumbers are inside installing piping in the floor, electricians are roughing piping in the walls and in the floors, so we're preparing to pour slabs around the pool for pool net. Masons are moving along at a nice pace. Getting the walls up, the north wall is completed. We'll have the west wall completed, and the south wall will have a hole, leave a hole in the wall to get equipment in and out of the site. They've already started installing ductwork, because our HVAC equipment is ready, so we're putting the large ductwork in above it so that we can slide the equipment in through the east end of the building, and then the east end of the building will be grepped up. So, some very good progress moving forward.
So you're confident we'll get it closed up before winter?
Yes, we're, that's our game, we'll have it all closed up. Well, we're gonna have some temporary, you know, doors and stuff like that, but, yeah.
Side question. What if you, if the equipment needs to be replaced, how do you get that?
We designed the building with large movers on the east end of the building, so in the future, when equipment has to be replaced, you can pull the whole mover out, and you'll be able to get the equipment in and out of the building. So, we thought ahead on that.
Good question.
For the parking, additional parking, progress on that, it's at review with the village engineer. Expected to have final comments from them sometime this week. Contractors are set, ready to move forward with starting the work. So we will be starting the work onsite. There's some key things to move around on the site with the bricklayers and equipment and scaffolding before we can start doing curb work around the building. We're also working to schedule getting gas from the building.
When do the asphalt plant schools?
Usually after Thanksgiving, in worst weather, so...
Pretty cool.
Yeah. We've done...
Mark, do we have yet any sense of when that lot would potentially be available for use?
The lot will be available in spring, once the plants open up again, the asphalt plants. What we'll be doing is putting the initial binder coat down. So when the plants open up in the spring, we'll schedule work to come in and put the final, finish coating of asphalt down and paint, straight to parking lots.
So same, just to go back to our timeline that we always talk about, so we're still anticipating, I'm asking a rhetorical question, anything, we're still anticipating that sometime in the spring, we will have the pool completed and ready for the board to jump in it, okay? And then it kind of running parallel, the parking will be kind of on a similar track.
Yeah, similar track, it'll all be dependent on weather for the asphalt.
Generally speaking, if I'm asked that question, I say before graduation.
Yes, it will be done before graduation.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
All right, well done.
Okay, next on superintendent's report is freedom of information request. We had one request since our last meeting. The request was received on 8/29/18 from Charlene Maddox, marketing coordinator for WFF Facility Services in St. Louis, Missouri. The information requested was regarding Community High School District 128's Custodial Ground and Maintenance Services Agreement. Ms. Maddox was requesting a copy of the current contract with your facilities provider, what was paid to your facilities provider for each of the past two years, and the proposal submitted by your facility services provider during the last bidding cycle. Dan was responsible for follow-up. The response date was 9/28/18, which is also the commercial response deadline, and Dan spent about one hour in responding to the request. So that is the only FOIA request this month. And just two quick things under other from me tonight, just a reminder to the board and the administrators here tonight, and most importantly, the community, that the District 128 Foundation will host their big event fundraiser on Friday, November 9th. It will be a white deer run golf course, very nice facility. And again, that money is used to fund innovation grants in the school district and also our needy student fund. At this point, the foundation has given roughly $300,000 in innovation grants, and they've really been the tip of the spear on our innovation work in the district, really leading to our new daring mission. So it's a great opportunity to come out and have a really nice evening with some really friendly people. So those of us that have gone every year, you know, it's a very nice event, and we have a lot of citizens working as part of the foundation on behalf of that. Scott, I don't know if we're carrying, if you want to make a comment.
Register on the district website.
Right? Yep.
It's a great event, and this year should be a little special, because there's a pre-event party at the Groody House beforehand, where we can all go and walk there before the event starts. Or maybe that's post-party.
I mean, it could be.
Everyone.
Tell Mrs. Groody.
Okay, so you can show her the video and just say, oh, I forgot to tell you. Okay, and last, last up, just again, tracking, you know, kind of our projected enrollment at the two buildings. At this time of the year, we're required to do what's called the Fall Housing Report for Illinois State Board of Education, which would include all the students that are housed in our buildings, plus any of our students that are, let's say, outsourced at, for seat all services, but are still our students, and we have to account for them, because they could come back at any time. So at Libertyville High School, the Fall Housing Report, all in is 1,959 students, and at Vernon Hills High School, 1,488. So, you know, we are up a little bit at LHS, and we're continuing to rise at Vernon Hills. So we'll be tracking, obviously, those numbers and numbers at District 73 in particular, you know, attempting to continue to monitor growth in the south end of the district and potential impacts of that may have on the district, okay? So that concludes, believe it or not, the superintendent's report tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want to do our informal invite of the students if they would need to leave?
Students, if you would like to exit stage left or right, depending on which way you're facing, you can certainly go.
I am glad you guys were able to stay for that presentation.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good week.
Can I all check Zach out on Wednesday night at 6:30?
Very good.
Five. Five at Barrington.
It's warmer than it was the last day.
Keep it going, Zach. Okay, keep it going.
I guess.
One at a time.
Okay, next, consent vote agenda is listed. Can I ask for approval of the consent?
Got a question on it.
I got one to the motion, then we'll come up with questions, right? Is there a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
So moved.
Okay, now, I need discussion. So did you get the same one?
Nah, I got it. Maybe. Probably not. The only thing on, can you just briefly explain, typically, we've had, we always like to watch Capital Outlay, and when I was looking at the expenditure report, it looked like Capital Outlay was going pretty fast this year, i.e. at 60% in some areas, I think in one of the funds. Is there something in there that would drive it up to that high? Or is, again, it should be about 25%, because we're a quarter of the way through the year. And again, that just kind of, when I was scanning stuff, that just kind of popped in and I went, ooh, Capital Outlay, obviously a bigger line item, and we're at 60%. So just kind of address maybe what might be in there, if we front-loaded some stuff, or what's going on there, maybe?
Yeah, short answer is, a lot of that, the Capital Outlay, particularly in front 20, might be where you're looking. A lot of that work is done during the summer, and so the big bulk of that work is done in the summer, and then we pay it August, you know, we pay some in July, some in August, September, you know, we get some still carrying over in October. So a bulk of the capital projects that we'll typically spend the money on is right around the summer months.
So it's almost an inverse relationship of salaries, which we get, you know, it's low, but it's really not low, because we pay September, didn't you?
Yeah, correct. Sorry. Yeah, correct. So when I'm analyzing trending and seeing, looking what I'm doing, you know, I'll look at salaries and benefits relative to our fiscal year, because those need to track exactly per the payrolls. So if you read the written report, you're tracking great, and I love the way we've been able to kind of split out things, so I can actually track properly now. Now the other thing, services and supplies and everything, those are, those will be varied. So I look more fine in the detail, because some things, purchase services-wise, we buy once a year. And so that makes sense for some of those line items to be 100% spent, because, you know, we buy insurance like once a year, right? And so those kind of things I take into context when I'm, when I'm looking at how we're trending, as an example.
So we're okay on Capital Outlay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's a gagging issue. Timing.
Yes.
Good question, though that wasn't the one I had, very good question. Mine is actually simple, and I think the answer is yes, but I noticed trips two and three were 2020?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that's right.
Twenty and a half, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Facility and finance, check first.
Okay, okay. First thing on the list is 2008 tax levy estimate.
Scott, before Dan starts, let's note for the record in the community, we are not voting on the tax levy tonight.
There's no vote tonight. This is a discussion presented...
Appears to be some sense that was voting here on the tax levy tonight in the, some, a few people in the community, and that is not an accurate statement.
That is true. All right, so tax levy estimate, Dan.
Yep, so I wanted to put together some information, similar but more condensed to what you saw a few weeks ago. So we have, is there a clicker you said? I have, great. No, no. So I just wanted to go over a few things as a reminder for both the board and those of attendance and watching later online to do. So one of the things that's required by state law is that before a board can adopt a levy, according to something called the Truth in Taxation Act, no less than 20 days before you do that, the board has to estimate what their levy will be, because if you estimate that you're going to ask, because again, remember, the levy is the amount of dollars you're asking for, if you're going to ask for more than 105% of what you got last year, so more than a 5% increase, then you have to do, you have to, you have to do what's called a truth in taxation hearing, you have to publish a notice in the paper, a lot of hoops to jump through legally you have to do. And so this is an exercise basically for us to do that together and to show what is our estimate of the levy. Same, really same information that I shared last time, but I'm just kind of doing it formally in a board meeting for you.
Next poll, would you include any property?
It, yeah, well, yes. What you're asking for versus what you've got last year, all in. Mostly all in, sorry, truth in taxation is a little, can be tricky, but essentially all in. All right, so really, well, I wanted to provide you some information on history. I've got a slide also that I was able to update, one of the charts last time that I didn't have, but I have it now, information for the 2018 levy estimate and the next steps. So in terms of our history, this is our total extension, all in, that you can see the history of the last seven, eight years. And just giving you that data point, I had 2017 added in there, really showing that this is going to be all in, so this is also going to include debt service, but you can kind of see, it has gone up and down depending on, you know, some of that, those abatements and everything that happened. So as you can see, kind of a history of our extension. Now, here is a slide that I was able to update with 2017 numbers. So what this, what this shows is the last eight years, eight, eight years, starting in 2010 as a baseline, and kind of showing, the light blue is what you, what the actual levy and extension was. Right, you ask for a certain amount of money, but then the extension is what you got. So really, it's the extension, but that's a kind of weird word, so we'll call it levy. The actual levy we had in 2010, and then from then on, you can see what the actual numbers were throughout 2017. Then what I have showing is what those numbers would have been had the district decided to not do any abatements. So you can see in the years, basically 2011 through 2015, the actual levy was less than what you could have levied, had you decided not to do abatement. So those, that's showing the, basically, the difference and the impact of the abatements on the levy for those, that time period. Then in the gold kind of color is that there was a decision, I honestly can't remember which year it was, to adjust, it might have been between the '15 and '16 year, to adjust the actual levy ask. And so what that, what that gold bar is, what is if you had maxed out your levy every single year, where it would be at. So this is just kind of trying to show you data that you have not asked for as much as you could have over the years, really. Just showing that data. So going forward, because there is no debt service anymore, we don't have any debt issuance, you know, the differences in the actual levy versus levy of no abatements is going to be the same, because there's nothing to abate anymore. So we'll just kind of keep watching this as the years go, to show you that information. So in terms of the EAV, sorry, the funds is a little tiny, but this is me breaking out what I've gotten, the estimated data from the county assessor, in terms of how our, how, what the, what the property values, how those split apart in our district, the vastment.
Dan, just for the audience, can you explain EAV, what that means?
Yeah, EAV is the equalized assessed value. So essentially, if you've ever heard the term, the tax base, it's really, it's a correlation between the property values in the, in the taxable properties within our district. So there's things you can't tax, like other governmental properties, some hospitals. So this is taxed, things you can tax. And so the value is done by the assessor, then they assess that value, there's the value is a fair market value, so if your house worth 500,000, that's the value, then they assess it, which is a third of the value, and then they equalize it, which is a factor given by the state. Our factor is one, so it's kind of simple. So we equalize assessed value, that's essentially trying to look at the property values in our district. And you can see the vastment area is residential, but then we do have a pretty healthy balance of industrial and commercial.
Can you read that? Can you just read what's in there? I can't see it. What are the pie, what are the pieces?
Yeah, so the different classifications for by property tax, residential, I can't see that number, but I'm guessing it's around, close to 70.
69.7% for residential.
Thank you.
Industrial is the green, which is 10%.
Industrial, 10%.
Commercial is the yellow, 19.8%.
Commercial, 19.8.
And a sliver of red is farm at .5%.
Thank you, Francis. Silver of farm at .5, just to get it on the audio, in case they can't hear. So that, that's the, the rough categories that EAV is classified for us, how we, that data we get. And so that, that's, that's your tax base, that's what makes up your tax base in this district.
What, what's that for, 7%?
7%.
Okay. Hey, Dan, can you go back on top for a second?
Can we just add something to this slide? Actually, it would be interesting on this slide to just make a statement that says we have basically, I don't know what the red line is, we under levy X amount relative to what we could have, because everybody's always beating people like us up or maximizing what they, what they levy for and all that stuff. There's a lot that we've left on the table.
Correct. That is, whether or not it's a lot, I couldn't tell you, you have left money on the table, and because of the compounding impact of that, this will perpetuate...
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, but I think it, it would be a good statement to put on a slide like this, because we might use this slide probably in some of our future things, so. Basically, again, I don't know what the exact line is, but we basically have under levy X amount relative, and it's probably even more.
Yeah, I have some data, you've not maxed out your levy by a certain amount.
You didn't even max it out in '17.
No, you have, you did in '17, but the gold is if you had never done any other previous...
So it's part of the compounding you just talked about.
Compounding.
That's, because we, but, but to this point, it's still relevant, and I think there is still, as we go through and we vote on this next month, correct? I think it's also very good to have an educational component to this, because as you go through, and once again, you will have a certain proportion of residents whose taxes will go up. And the hypothesis or their belief is, wow, they're taking much more money than they were previously, because my taxes went up 8% hypothetically, right? The reality of this is, that whole equalized assessment, you have a certain percentage that we can only take. If somebody's tax is going up, it's not because we're taxing significantly more than we could or should, but also it gets into this equalized, where we've talked about, somebody's taxes could go up. If that is set as a certain threshold overall across all residents, somebody's going down.
Correct.
And people don't understand, they just think, wow, look at my tax bill. The majority of this is going to X, Y, Z, municipality, schools, 70, 73, 128. My hypothesis is, wow, they're taxing me more. And I just think part of when we go through that to understand, what are we able to get? What do we really get? And then how does that affect somebody's tax bill?
Correct, and I have some of that information on a later slide, just to kind of flush that out a little bit, because it can certainly sound confusing, when we say it's going to go up by this much, and people have different numbers.
Yes.
Because it's, it's going up, when we're talking going up, it's a generalization, but it's always going to be relative to each person's own property and how that property changed, for sure.
And in, and in general, there's a couple of points that Dan and I always talk about, and we've done on the board here a number of times. So remember in Illinois, the property tax in the collar counties in Chicago, surrounding Chicago, are, were in a property tax cap, okay? So we're capped at 5% or CPI, whichever is higher.
Whichever's less.
Which is ever less. So, thank you, Cap, for that correction, which is ever less. So last year, CPI is designated by the factor...
Your, your...
So the aggregate levy that we can take in across all taxpayers is capped at 2.1%.
So regardless if Scott's taxes go up, $5,000, it might go down at 1,000. The aggregate levy that we can get from all of the pie chart that Dan showed before, some residential, commercial, industrial property, is capped at 2.1%. Now the other factor, there's two factors, it's kind of like an A and a B. The other factor is new growth, and we have one opportunity to capture new growth. So if we bring that new growth in, Dan puts that in a percentage, or the county, or the township puts that in a percentage. And so if somebody sees, for example, a 2.9% levy, our aggregate levy that we take from actual taxpayers is still capped at 2.1%. The extra growth is on top of that and specifically for the new growth. So Scott doesn't have to pay, you know, more taxes for us to get that new growth, and it broadens the tax base. So we need to keep it right, we need to just continually repeat those messages because somebody gets their tax bill, they go, well, my tax bill went up 4.5%. You know what? The superintendent of the board lied to me. You know, they told me we were capped at 2.1%. Our aggregate levy is capped at 2.1% plus the new growth on top of that, which does not impact current taxpayers. That's not taken from or in addition to current taxpayers.
Or say it differently, the, the bottom line is, the difference in anyone's tax bill other than the 2.1% is just your valuation change. So if your taxes change different from 2.1% up or down, then it's all due to the fact that your valuation went up early?
Kind of. I'll, I'll, I'll show what the, what the tipping point is. So to continue on, so new property, so we have new property that is able to come on the rules. Our taxable new property is 14.3 million, which is right in line with our average. Now, just FYI, Melody Farms, you'll see that's actually in a TIF area. So all the growth from there, which is substantial, is not taxable for us. That goes into the TIF fund for the next 23 years. So we wish them well, but we wish them really well 23 years from now.
It'll be the only one that will still be here.
I'll let you know what happens. So, yeah. So just a few things that I try to look at, you know, when I'm seeing new property. Non-residential improvements, because the vast majority of our new property is people making small, big improvements to their houses. But in terms of the non-residential stuff, Menards came online at a valuation of 2.5 billion. Now that's the EAV, so that's not the actual fair market value, but that's the EAV that's assigned. Care Animal Hospital in Libertyville on Park, just west of Butterfield. Look, I'm getting the lingo of the streets here, I'm getting there. I was terrified about saying that, I didn't know if I was going to say it right. Brian had to help me rehearse how to say that. And then Chase Bank, which is right by Menards, at a valuation of about 400,000. So those are just a few high points. I'll try to look at those every year, just to let you know what's coming out. Like last year was the, one of the hospital advocate had an edition that they did, and another one was Uncle Julio's came on, so I'll let you guys know of those. Here's something interesting in terms of the new property that's added. What new property was added dollar wise this year versus last year? So the blue is last year, so last year you can see in its by class, again, I apologize for the small text, but it looks big enough on my screen. I guess I wasn't standing far enough away from the screen.
Future paper copies or a webex or something.
Yeah, this is the same information that we had two weeks ago, too. But maybe we were closer to the screen then. So residential improvement, it's interesting to see how it just kind of ends up working out the same. Residential improvement is more, so there's more new construction happening in residential improvement relative to year ago. Both farm and commercial is relatively the same. Industrial is my one outlier that looks a little tad weird, so that's one thing that I'm kind of looking into more. There's, seems like there's really no industrial new property done, and so I'm trying to figure out if that's true or if I've got an error in the data somewhere. Yeah, so Abbott would be the biggest for sure that we have, and so the question is, is Abbott building anything? I don't, I don't drive by there, I drive by there every day, but I don't, you know, pay attention to what's going on. So that's something I want to research into. So now in terms of our, our levy estimate for 2018. So what I'm estimating our extension is, is at 78.4 million. That's an increase of the CPI, which for, to keep it simple, we'll call it the rate of inflation. CPI stands for Consumer Price Index, but let's call it the rate of inflation to keep it simple. And the rate that we use for that year is 2.1%. New property that's added on, that I've calculated to be an impact of about .42%. That's the 14 million applied to our EAV, for a total increase of 2.52%. Now, the point I want to make is actual increases to existing properties will average 2.1 relative to the change in assessment. So the average will be 2.1, but the actual change per parcel will be relative to how that parcel changed. And I do have a slide that will kind of show a little bit more information, it's not that fancy. Frances, do you mind switching to that worksheet? So this is the worksheet that I really updated for you, and when we met two weeks ago, I told you that I had kind of the overall number that I do. Now I have the actual specific numbers, and I even included the packet. The resolution's ready to go for the actual numbers to use. What I'm looking at, fund balances, what each fund needs, you know, in terms of how they're operating. So I know one thing that I've heard you mention a little bit over the years is looking at the, the balance between that fund. I think we're making some changes to put more money there that will, that will kind of help balance things out in the future. So we're making, I've kind of looked at all those numbers and made, and we're able to look at that. The big thing to focus on really is that number in the bottom right hand corner, and that is the 2.91%. That's the number that if that number is five, is more than 5%. So if it's 5%, it's okay, 5.00, that's okay, 5.01, it's over 5%. Then the Truth in Taxation kicks in, so because it's under that, it doesn't. Now technically, you could levy 4.8%, 4.9% and still not be under the 5%, right? But we've kind of, based on what we've talked about, you know, that, that additional cushion really at the end of the day for us is unnecessary. And so the 2.9 different than the 2.5 estimate I have, that .4 is really kind of my estimate for errors because some of the data looks a little weird for me right now, particularly like industrial stuff. I want to kind of check into that. But it gives me a little bit of cushion in terms of not accidentally leaving money. If you want intentionally do that, that's fine, but you don't want to do it on accident.
So we wouldn't miss anything that's there, but we may not get that 2.91.
You won't get the 2.91.
The 2.91 again, just to beat that kind of horse over and over again, is 2.1, right? Plus new growth.
Well, the two, the, so the 2.91 is, the 2.1 for existing property, .42 for new growth, and then a little bit more for cushion because those number, those other number, the other estimates, particularly new property and EAV values, are based on estimates. So in the formula for how all that, how that algebra works, two of my four variables are unknown. I have to guess those variables, so that allows me some variance in this.
Totally understand that. The point to make again, for John, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen at home, that is trying to figure this very complex thing out, that you do a great job of bringing down to people to understand that anything above 2.1, whether it's 2.52 or it's 2.91, is new growth, would be considered new growth, correct? And it will not add to the individual taxpayer's burden, correct?
Beyond the CPI.
Beyond the CPI.
By the, beyond the 2.1.
In aggregate, yes.
Aggregate.
So, do you mind flipping back, Dan?
Why would I ever put 4.8 out or 4.5 out? Because I'm never going to get it, I don't think, am I?
You.
I want to get that.
How would you get 4.00 if you had a significant amount of new property that's happening? So I'll give you an example.
Historically, that's what's been done, we throw out a huge number just in case, and that's why we, years ago, argued, why would we do that? You got to publish it, it's all in bad will.
So I'd have to protect.
Right, that's exactly what's happening.
If Melody Farms.
If Melody Farms was coming out of our rules, that would generate a lot of money, and I'd have to look at that. I'll give you a more real example, in my previous district, we had a TIF actually come off. So I somehow got there in year 22, and then it came off, and we saw the TIF come out, we saw substantial. We knew this was coming, and of course, this came at a very difficult political time, right? And so we knew that we were going to have an increased growth of property tax revenue of $600,000 from this TIF. So we had to ask for, I, I thought we were going to end up getting probably like 5-ish, but I wasn't sure. We ended up asking for like, I think somewhere between 6 and 8. But you had to go, you had to do the, the Truth in Taxation at that point because you, you, you want to, you want to be sure. And I think we, we ended up getting like really closer, a tad under 5. But that was an example of, you know, something that you want to make sure. If you have a big new construction coming on, that's when you really. But, but if you have a situation like in our community that you kind of know what's going on, that you know there's nothing big, the reason you would ask for 4.8 is because it's not 5. And you have a lot of cushion in case you have some very rude numbers. So we tried to mitigate, mitigate some of that, and that was kind of a lot of discussion that we worked through last year. We were trying to figure out kind of an overall, I guess, philosophy around that, I guess, if you will.
So but at some point, at some point, when that big new block of property comes out, let's just say I had a big, huge building, we were getting our own revenue. You know, we complain all the time, the reason our taxes are so high is there's not enough of industrial base, you know, and all the residential housing's paying for it, and then the industrial base comes, we take a lot of money. At some point, people have a legit beef and says, well, where's my relief? Okay.
I, I'm sure this is the right time for the question, but does the commercial end operate in the same way as residential? In that if the value of, I'm thinking of the mall, which is sitting, R and D now, if that valuation a year from now, because it would be, that's right? If that goes substantially down, does that get absorbed by all the other commercial properties?
Yep.
Commercial properties?
You're absolutely right.
Especially if Melody Farms is a part of residential as well.
So there's a few things that in theory, so in theory, if its valuation drops, then the taxes they would pay would get spread to other people. And overly, overly simplify the theory.
Resident.
Yeah, any of it.
If yours goes down, yours goes up.
And in the whole, that's the whole point of the valuation process, is to the quote unquote fair share. How do they figure it out and spread that fair share? But the reality is, is what that will do is impact the aggregate. And so that will, that will impact the aggregate so that depending on how your property values change relative to the average change of the entire EAV spectrum, that's what it'll, it'll impact. So if that goes down, it will lower, you know, so if you're in, if you're in a period where your property values are growing faster than the average, this, if you have something big dropping value, that will lower the average and thus potentially give you a circumstance where you're going to be paying more than the average.
So the fact that this new commercial space, retail space is coming in, that's in our TIF district, might empty out even more of the other existing and micro values of those.
Well, it's, it's possible. I was with Zeta Verna Hills leaders being two weeks ago, and the village administrator and director of development were there. And they're pretty bullish on the reconfiguration of the mall over the next two years. And I think what Karen is really referencing are the big anchor stores, the traditional anchor stores.
Well, just will the owner of the mall go after that?
Sears, Penny's, but the, the owner of the mall is very bullish on the mall, is working with the village, I think, to recreate malls in the way they're recreating malls, you know, to be different than being anchored by the poor. But I, I think they're pretty encouraged by their work.
They don't think we'll appeal?
Meaning the Verna Hills, meaning the Verna Hills administration. They, it's going to take a couple of years to do probably everything that they're going to do over there. But Dan, it leads to another question. Is retail the same kind of tax base as commercial industrials? So for example, does Abbott pay a higher rate of tax than the mall does?
Per EAV, no. Per dollar of EAV, no, but how the EAVs are calculated are slightly different. They, they'll take into account not just the value of the building that it's in, but also the revenue that that building can generate. They take that into account when they're valuing.
For Abbott or for the mall?
Commercial, industrial. So at, the mall would be commercial, our retail would be considered commercial, so they take those things into consideration when they're valuing those properties.
Well, like, look at Menards, 2.5 million dollars, and that building probably costs 5,000.
What next?
Let's, well, yeah, so the, the actual valuation of what was, because the land that was already there had value, had substantial value already, so it's really the building on top. I think it'll be interesting to see how that goes in the future, because again, this is always as of January 1st. So I don't know what the status of Menards was on January 1st or 20th.
Those things are valued at the, you know, as pole marks. All of the inside fixtures and everything they do to build that are often not, not counted.
The personal, sorry, the personal property isn't, but, but, but the, the actual valuation of that property is, according to the state laws, is based on the, the capitalized income flow of that property, so.
Alright, so suffice it to say, so what's the next step there?
Next step is to switch back to the slide. So, so the next steps would be review this again at our November 5th Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, and then look for adoption at our November 12th board meeting.
Okay, can you go back one slide again?
Yeah.
Because when we're doing good presentations, you always make your key points at the beginning, and in the middle, and at the end. So let's one more time come back to, we are capped at the aggregate, so all the taxes we collect from all of the means at 2.1%, correct?
Yep.
Okay? And then any new property, okay? Which is not an additional expense to any of the individual taxpayers, it's simply us capturing that new growth. So if the levy is 2.52% or 2.92%, 2.1 is the aggregate can only go up 2.1 and the new growth moving into it. So Scott is not going to have to pay an additional, you know, above 2.1. He's not going to have to pay the 2.91.
Well, Scott might, I've got an in, I've got an in with the treasurer, so. The other, the other.
If I pay, if I pay it higher, someone's paying less.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's eventually.
So another thing, I, I had a different slide here, but I must have removed it. So essentially, what this will depend on, and this is all estimates right now, but the idea is that our EAV across the board, if our existing property is not new property getting added, existing property is going up 3.43%. And so on average, property owners, if their value goes up by 3.43%, their taxes for our, for our portion will go up, CPI. If your value goes up more than the 3.4%, you will likely probably see an increase that's more than that. So that's also, if it's on, if it's on the average, where the averages change.
Yeah, one other, when you present it again next time, because I think the question people always ask, well, again, you know, why shouldn't that new property go for relief to residential taxpayers? We can do a quick calculation, and I think it turns out to be tens of dollars to people. But it might be worth, you know, having that. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so it works out to be about 350,000 on a levy of 78 million.
Yeah, and I think for a $300,000 house, it would be about 15 bucks, which I did my quick calculation correctly. But I mean, I think if that's true, it's worth saying because it's not making a difference. At which point, it really is to the advantage of the school, and it's smart for the school to take it.
Well, with your growth, we only have one opportunity to do that as well.
Yeah, but I mean, I think again, it's a realistic thing for people to push back and say, yeah, if you take the money to leave. I don't think that's true. But educate them and say, well, let me tell you what, take your, take 15 bucks.
Alright, so next item on the list is a voting item.
Yeah, just a quick review, and then Dan and Mark can jump in, as the board is aware. We had some significant electrical issues at Libertyville High School. We had to do some emergency repairs that, you know, I communicated with you as individual board members about. We need to come back on the backside of that, since I gave Dan and Mark emergency authorization to do those needed repairs. We need to come back on the backside of getting that process rolling and simply do a resolution. You have a copy of the resolution that we worked on with, you know, Len Himes. And you will see the threshold sit there is $30,000, and that's just in case we're estimating the repairs around 22 or 23 right now. So it actually came in a little less because they were actually able to find a part for the situation that they needed. But just in case we get in there and there's some other issues, the $30,000 threshold gives us enough cushion without having to come back with you again, stop the work, come back to you again, call special meeting and get authorization. So, Dan?
Yeah, so really, you know, we, with the emergency in place, you know, the initial assistance we got were quite a bit higher in terms of what those do, and it could push you past the threshold that's required for bidding. So you'd have to go out and bid, but we don't have time because we really need to have power for the building, so we don't have time to do all those other steps. So we kind of moved that process along really fast, and the revised proposal we had was right around the 22,000 mark. But that is just for the actual contractor doing their, their parts and labor installation. There's also going to be some work that we're anticipating from ComEd, but we don't anticipate it to be super significant. That's why we have the round number of 30,000 in there. And if it ends up that we spend less than 25,000, this may not have been something we ever needed to bid, but we would rather be safe than sorry and more transparent, certainly on the front end of having a resolution saying that you could spend more money than we actually really needed to spend. So that's, that's really kind of the, the series.
So the 30,000 is intended to cover everything?
The 30,000 is intended to cover everything for the fix. We had the, we had, we had the initial emergency patch job, is that a? We had the, we had, we had the, the initial emergency patch job, is that a fair word?
Yeah.
That, we already paid for that, that was seven-ish.
So this is the true fix?
This is the, this is the true fix, um, that we have, that is still classified as emergency, because it's not a short process to get this done and figured out and everything like that, so we had to move that along.
All right. So if I, I state this properly, we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution that we have, basically the resolution is to allow superintendent, assistant superintendent to go ahead and you finance to negotiate a contract, um, for this three thousand amp, um, switch and installation to not, that will not exceed, or I should say, will not exceed thirty thousand dollars, another way to say it is up to thirty thousand dollars. And the resolution authorized the superintendent and Dan to take all the actions necessary to purchase this, uh, and report back to the board on their status. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Scott, one other addition to that, just for knowledge, and I think you're aware of this, but just to repeat this again, um, under statute, now we're doing the emergency resolution, it requires six yes votes to carry the resolution.
Very good point.
So moved.
Second.
So any questions? Dialogue?
I, I just want to be sure, since I don't think you were there at the last facilities and finance meeting, uh, we were all extremely grateful for the hard work of your team who went above and beyond to respond to this situation, so please pass along our gratitude, um, it was not overlooked.
Thank you, yeah, we'll start.
All right, can we have a roll call?
Luce?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Castle?
Aye.
And motion passes. I think that's six out of six yes votes, so thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, any, anything other? That would be it?
Okay, program personnel, chief of.
Thank you, Dr. Grudy. Uh, we have, uh, two employment actions here that did not make it on the consent agenda, one is a resignation, and the other is a, a replacement hire, so. Have a motion in a second? Uh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion, questions, comments? No, okay, roll call please.
Munstead?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Castle?